I'm going to call this meeting of the Gloucester School Committee to order, and I'll remind everybody that the mission of Gloucester Public Schools is for all students to be successful, engaged, lifelong learners. And we will wave the flag salute. And we will open it up for oral communications. If there's anybody here who would like to address the school committee on any subject not on the agenda, do so by raising your hand remotely. Or if you're phoning in, you can hit star nine, and I will be able to see that you would like to. Okay. Tonight, we are going to continue with our interviews. Tonight, we're interviewing Mr. Ben Loomis, who has most recently been the interim superintendent at Brookline. It's been suggested that maybe we should not be doing a wrap-up at the end of the meetings, just because, to some extent, people aren't real comfortable about putting it out there, what they're thinking, without having seen everybody, and other reasons. So without objection, unless somebody really sees value in it, we will have our discussion at the end of the interviews. Melissa, do you want to read your thing?
Yeah, I thought you were waiting for me to answer that question. Sorry. So I just want to make the public statement consistent with the governor's orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law and banning gatherings of more than 25 people. This meeting will be conducted by remote participation to the greatest extent possible. The public may not physically attend this meeting, but every effort will be made to allow the public to view and listen at the meeting in real time. Persons who wish to do are invited to view the meeting at the Zoom information located on our agenda. In the event that a live transition proves unworkable for any reason, an audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of the meeting will be made available to the city's website as soon as possible.
Thank you. So we're ready to proceed. Dorothy, you want to contact?
I will go ahead and send a text to Mr. Loomis. He responded okay, so I'm sure he'll be here in a couple of seconds.
Jonathan, I just wanted to remind us all to use mute if we're not asking our questions.
Good. Yeah, we don't need to hear the dog barking.
No, and Jonathan, keep your fingers to yourself, because your son said you must have unmuted me.
Hello, folks.
Welcome to Gloucester, Mr. Loomis. And we'll start with introductions. And my name is Jonathan Pope. I'm the chair of the school committee. Melissa?
Good evening, thank you for joining us. My name is Melissa Texer at Prince. I am vice-chair of the school committee.
Hello, Melissa.
Samantha?
Hello, thanks for joining us. I'm Samantha Watson.
Hi Samantha, nice to meet you.
Joel?
Well, my name is Joel Fabazin.
Hi, Joel.
Kathy?
Hi, Ben, I'm Kathy Clancy.
Hi Kathy, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Laura?
Hi, Ben, I'm Laura Weesent. I'm the secretary of the school committee. Welcome.
Thank you, Laura, thank you very much.
And our mayor, Sephia Taken.
Hi, Ben, Mayor Sephia Romeo Taken. Welcome to virtual Gloucester.
Hello, Mayor, it's a pleasure to meet you.
Okay, the process that we've gone through is you'll have a little bit of time for an opening statement. Then we have 12 questions hitting different areas of our concerns, reflecting the advertisement to some extent. And then there'll be a little bit of time for some follow-up. We have conducted two interviews so far. Yours is the third, and we're going to be conducting two more between now and Friday afternoon. Then try to narrow it down to one or two, well, two or three candidates, and then we'll proceed with site visits as well as follow-up interviews. So that's the process, but it's ongoing.
Great, sure, no problem. It's understandable. In this day and age, it's understandable that it's developing.
Right. Trying to figure it out as we go. So, like I say, welcome, and the floor is yours to tell us a little bit about yourself.
Great, thank you. Well, I do like to begin with why Gloucester. It's an important place to me for a variety of reasons. First of all, it's an incredible city. I just, I think, first of all, the natural beauty of it, the long history of it. It's a history that I think really mirrors in many ways some of the big pieces of American history, you know, from Native Americans to the early settlers, to its shipbuilding and fishing industry and growing economy, to the challenges it has faced in the last 30 or 40 years around those, as it's changed, to its incredible history of immigration and immigrants. I think also, you know, as it's continued shifting its economy towards, you know, biotech and higher tech and the new industries and tourism, I think those are wonderful challenges as well. I think it's a place that has tremendous strengths culturally, socioeconomically. It's many people and diversity. And also, I think I see it as a very proud place, you know, a place that has a lot to be proud of. I think it has a long history of arts, as everyone knows. So it's a real amalgam of just these tremendous pieces, which I think in many ways, people aren't quite as aware of as I wish they would be. I think it's also a place that has some real challenges, you know, academically certainly, in some degree socioeconomically, sure. But it seems to be a place that's taking those challenges seriously. And I'd really like to be part of continuing to build Gloucester's future and while honoring its past and its present. I also have a couple of personal connections to Gloucester. My mom has lived in Magnolia for almost 10 years. And my wife, her family grew up in Manchester, so next door. But her father, this is going way back, but he was a reporter and the editor of the Gloucester Daily Times. So there's some family history there. It's a place I spent quite a bit of time the last decade or so. So, and then more about me. I think you'll find, as you learn more about me, that I know all the parts of the work that a superintendent has to take on. And I've been doing them, been doing them for five years and even longer than that. I've got broad and deep experience, most recently in Brookline, as a special assistant to the superintendent, and then now as a superintendent. I've been involved deeply in curriculum instruction, teaching, professional development, going back 20 years now in education. Have a strong experience in capital projects. We've had a couple of exclusion votes recently in Brookline, successful and unsuccessful. Been involving in coaching and supporting and supervising principals for a long time. And most working with teachers' unions in Massachusetts and many places in the country to do some great, great work. So I've seen a real broad range of how things are done in many places across Massachusetts, across the nation, even internationally. And I'll bring all of that to Gloucester if I'm selected as superintendent. I think you'll also find that I'm a collaborative and inclusive leader. What that means to me is, you know, we work as a team. And I listen to a diverse range of points of view. I find that I need to hear a bunch of points of view in order to make the best decision and make strong decisions going forward. It also means to me that, as superintendent, I need to work with and like to work with the mayor and the other town departments. You know, building a budget isn't just for the schools, but it's really for the whole city in this case. And that's the way I think of things. Also, you know, I feel Gloucester has a rich history of community partnerships and really need to continue to work closely with families, community organizations, nonprofits, obviously Gloucester Education Foundation. And I think you'll find that I'm that type of leader who works with others. And then the last piece, just briefly, is for me, it's about every child, every day. You know, we really, as educators, as community leaders, as teachers, as paraprofessionals, as union leaders, even as superintendent, it's really important that we help build a bright future for the children in Gloucester. You know, I think all of us can, it's our priority to see, and my priority to see, the talents, the skills, the curiosities, the hopes of our children, our students. And often, I feel that educators, coaches, folks in the schools, folks in the community, those adults are the ones who can see those dreams, those hopes for our students even before they see them. And I think our students need to know that we'll be with them every step of the way. We'll teach them and support them and cajole them and be tough on them when necessary in order for them to really reach their dreams. And so that's what I'm about, really knowing the work, really being a collaborative, inclusive leader, and someone who really cares about every child, every child, every day.
Thank you very much. And the first question will be asked by Joel Fabazin.
Thank you. This question can either be asked based on your knowledge of our district in particular, based on the research you've done, or can be answered based on just your understanding of challenges facing most districts in the Commonwealth. And the question is, what do you perceive to be the biggest or most pressing challenge facing our district that you will be able to make swift work in progressing against? And then what is the biggest or most pressing challenge that will take the longest to overcome?
Sure, it's a great question. You know, I think something that's very common these days, and I think I have a sense of from my last interview, that they may also be experiencing in Gloucester, is sort of the social and emotional well-being and support of students. And that happens in a variety of ways. We're often most concerned about those students who are acting out or having dysregulated behavior, because they can be very disruptive because of challenges they're facing, either in the school, academically or otherwise. But then also, then, a lot of students who are suffering silently and aren't acting out, and therefore, we may miss them. I think this day and age, with the social media, or the pressure students face, or the trauma they've experienced in so many ways, or even now especially with the coronavirus, you know, I think we're just beginning to take stock of the sort of impact, learning-wise, but also socially-emotionally, of students around this. So I think that's an area where we can act pretty quickly. And the way, my typical approach is find out what's working well. And that's what part of my job, if I enter Gloucester, will be for the first number of months, is what's going well, and particularly in this area? And how can we learn from that, both in Gloucester and start using those examples to highlight them and promote them and show others how to make real positive steps in that area? And then what can we learn from other folks? One thing we've been working closely on and thinking a lot about and taking some action on in Brookline is how do you develop a team of folks within a school who are directly focused on supporting the neediest students in terms of social, emotionally, and especially behavior? And one way of doing that, that we're working on now and hopefully can do for next year, but I know some other districts that are doing as well, is, you know, a team of highly-trained paraprofessionals working with a lead teacher. And they're identifying with teachers, specific students, that they need to be at specific points of the day. We can often figure out that and see that specific students have specific moments in the day, a transition, a specific classroom, perhaps a specific teacher, where it really sets them off, or they have trouble. And if you can analyze and understand it, then you can have these well-trained folks, supported by a highly-trained teacher, to be with those kids at those times and also help those teachers understand what can work with those students at that point. So that's just one example of the attention I pay to social and emotional behavior and helping students. But I think that can be done pretty quickly. I think a longer-term problem, I mean, I'll say this one thing. I think in every school district, there's always a matter of focus and priorities. And how do you make sure that whether it's a school committee or a superintendent or a principal at a school level, isn't trying to do too much? We have a habit in schools, whether it's here, or Colorado, or Illinois, or wherever, of trying to do too much. And that spreads our priorities, that spreads our budget, that spreads our focus. And we end up doing many, many things not very well. I think that's an area that, to really focus on a few high priorities, to have alignment between the school committee and the superintendent and his or her staff, and then have alignment with the schools as well. And that takes some time. You need community buy-in, you need community support, you need to really take some time to identify the true north. And then you really need to select a few things that will happen across the district. They can happen in different ways in different schools. But you have to have alignment there, and you have to then budget that way and hire that way and make choices that way and set your agendas to support those efforts and really maintain maximum focus on just a few things, doing those well. And then you will see progress. The area I always look to first is what's the quality of instruction and therefore, learning? And that's an area that most places, I don't know about Gloucester yet, because I haven't seen it up close and personal, but I always look at the quality of instruction and how do we, where are the best spots? And how can we learn from those best spots?
Thank you.
Sure.
The next question is from Mayor Taken. I know you're here. Mayor, you want to ask the question on leadership?
Hold on, hold on, yeah, absolutely. If you don't mind, Jonathan, because I had to go take this call. I apologize, Ben, but I'm going to have Jonathan Pope read off my questions. I apologize, everyone.
That's okay.
Okay, all right. She would be asking you, what do you perceive as, oh, that's Joel's here. What are the three most important traits you possess as a leader? Can you tell us about a time when you had to make a difficult decision that not everyone agreed with?
Oh, as a superintendent, you make a lot of those. So let me pick. In terms of the three most important traits, let me just answer that first. I'm a very direct individual. I really try to speak honestly and openly and directly to the folks. I do it respectfully, but I really want to give people the full information and the correct information. I don't believe in, I do believe in saying in a way that people can hear it, but I don't want to soften it so much that people aren't hearing the true message. So I really like to be direct to the folks. I do, I think, one part of, I mentioned before, but I'm an inclusive leader. It really does help me to hear from different points of view. And I'm a decisive person, but I do need to hear people's ideas. So in our leadership team, whether that's my senior cabinet or whether that's our principals, I have been able to really develop a culture, a norm. We're going to have a free-flowing discussion. I'm going to, I want to hear your ideas. And this year, as superintendent with our leadership team, we have, with our principals, they are much more open and honest and direct about their input and including difficult conversations. So that's another piece that I think I'm good at in terms of leader. And then I think I'm good at identifying the most important, as I mentioned before, the most important priorities and sticking with them. Keeping them focused on what those are and coming back to those highest priorities. And then making sure we're identifying what they are, measuring them, and moving forward with them. In terms of difficult decision, this year, well, they keep coming, honestly. Earlier on, the example I would use is the first time we created our FY21 budget. We're now in the process of cutting millions of dollars from it in Brookline because of the pandemic and the impact on the town budget. But earlier on, we knew we'd have a shortfall of about $3.5 million or so in terms of our projected expenses and our planned revenue. And what I had to do at that point, I felt, was first make sure the town and community and leaders and our school leaders and educators knew about it. So I was very open with that, open with how we got into that position, open with what challenges we faced. And then I began a different process than we normally had. In the past, the process in Brookline had been very siloed. Individual budget managers or school leaders speaking with our deputy superintendent or curriculum leader and having individual conversation about what they want to do or what they want to build or what they want to spend money on. I sort of blew that open and had much more work where we were working together on that. So the principal team discussing where they could identify cost savings. The coordinators or program directors working with each other, working in small groups and large groups. And we were able to identify much more, many different possibilities of finding cost savings than we ever had in the past. That also built quite a bit of collaboration with folks and relationships. It also built their understanding more fully of their own budgets. And then we presented some of, from there, identified some of the ideas, not all of them, obviously, that I proposed to the school committee. And then the other piece I did, because I believe in open transparency when it comes to budget, was we gave about 15 different presentations around what we do in our schools. Everything to how we staff and spend money on paraprofessionals, to how we support our Metco students, to how we have literacy coaches or specialists supporting literacy, how we do professional development, how we are out of district expenses for special education tuition and transportation. And that was all geared towards educating the school committee on a much deeper level about our program services and what we spend money on. Anyway, to make a long story short, it was difficult to have that open. Many folks didn't want to go through those difficult conversations. They weren't clear that it was going to lead us to a better place. And we pushed ahead and got good information. And as I said, build that team in a stronger way. And we're able to make some, identify some very limited saving, or limited actions around shaving teachers here and there, and FTEs, that were less across the board and less impact on students. And then even more importantly, now that we have to go back to the budget, because we identified all those ideas, we're in better position now, as things get worse, to know what is available for us and where we need to start with our further reductions.
Thank you. The next question is from Samantha.
So what are the core values that drive you as an educator? And what core values would you want to see in the staff you hire?
I think one is that, as I mentioned before, every child, every day. It's really important to me that we look really closely at all the students we're supporting. That means kids who are new to the district, those kids whose families have been in Gloucester for many years, kids who speak different languages other than English. That means folks who are from wealthier families, kids who are in the Vote Ed program. But we have to really make sure we value those kids, we understand them, we get to know them, we build relationships with them. They need to know that we care about them and that they belong, because they only will do their best work if they feel connected to the school and connected to adults in the school and know that they're there for them. They will teach them, they'll support them, do anything they can for them. Another one that's really important to me is working together to get better. I just think that that is the mindset that I want in my team, in our staff, in our teachers, in our schools, that no matter how well we're doing, we can get better. I really look, I'm a Patriots fan still, for the most part, while I have my reservations these days. And I really value how they get better through the season, every single time, you know? And I admire their discipline and focus, but I really believe a sense of a team being very real about the work they do and looking at data, looking at if you've instituted a new program, looking at your instructional practices, you know, how can we get better together? That isn't an individual process, but it means there's collaboration in planning time. There is collaboration in professional development at faculty meetings. It means that you look, take a hard look at what you're doing and that you're humble, and you're humble about what you're doing. I think another piece, two other pieces are positivity and civility. Positivity is the way I get through the long month of March, which is the longest month of the school year, although April, May this year have been pretty long. And so I really look for folks who look on the bright side and can see, schooling, education, and leading schools and being teachers is tough, tough work, you know? But you really have to stay positive and see the bright side and see your way through the difficult moments. You do that together as well. So positivity is a real important trait for me, looking at the bright side and being more of a problem solver than just a problem identifier. And the last piece, I think, would be civility. It's really important how we work together and that we take care of each other, that we lean in when people make mistakes. We care about them, we care for them. And one of the things I'm aware of is, one of your guiding principles is being a place that is people-centered, you know? And that really, to me, means a lot about civility. How do we support our people, teach our people, how do we hold them to high standards? But how do we make sure that we really work with them well and are kind and considerate and compassionate toward each other? Oh, sorry, and you saw, how will that show up in my work? It shows up, all those things show up every day. It shows up in how you're on a team meeting. So we keep track of what we're assigned to do, and we report on whether we did it or not. We laugh together a lot, my teams and our teams. We get along well, we work well, we know each other well. So that's really about civility and relationships. In terms of every day, every child, that's knowing those children well. That's about our work we've done on cultural bias and restorative practices in Brookline that I helped develop and helped bring about. That's about knowing every child well, because that's the best way to teach them well. So that's a way that every child, every day, comes into play. I think the other way that every child, every day, comes into play is about focus, is about having that as a mantra for every school, that we care about our students, we know them well, and we know what will help them forward.
Thank you. Well, so the next question is from Laura.
Ben, how have you built lines of communication and reached out to build community constituencies and strengthen relationships with local stakeholders and families? And then there's a second part. Please give an example of a situation in which these relationships were important in achieving a positive outcome.
Sure, I think they're always important, especially in education. I think you really get things done through relationships. You know, that can be relationships with your principals, with your senior leadership, with school members, obviously. So in terms of reaching out to the community and engaging folks, that's been a major work, a major part of my work prior to becoming superintendent. Really, one of my roles was community engagement and communications. And we were involved in, when I first started in Brookline, they'd been trying to identify a new site for a school for a number of years, about five or six years. And they'd gone through two different processes at that point. When I came on, it wasn't clear to me that people were in the know about the process. There wasn't any documentation of prior processes that was readily available. It seemed like people were tuning in as if they hadn't done a bunch of work already. So I quickly went about identifying, well, first of all, identifying some key messages that people needed to hear about those processes. This is for site selection, first of all. And, you know, what the goals were, why we were looking for, why we needed to build a new school. And so we really made it very clear, it was about substandard facilities. It was about this huge enrollment growth that had been happening in Brookline. And it was about supporting learners in way, especially special education learners and English language learners with facilities that we didn't have yet. We showed them the data, the growth of enrollment over time. We showed them the pictures of the substandard spaces and classes. We showed them how much our facilities, especially our common facilities, like cafeterias and hallways and gyms and libraries, were under-built and under-capacity. And then we also set a clear target for when the school committee and select board would make that decision and put it out pretty far. But by repeating those messages and that goal and that information repeatedly, we were able to do, and putting on our website, if you go to Brookline's website and our building projects area, you'll see just a tremendous amount of information about our whole process with at least four different building projects. And that's my work. And that's my work to make sure that the community was aware, they knew where they could go to get the information and be informed. They knew how they could come to meetings and be heard and be included. And they also knew how they could participate in the process, whether through building committees or through public comment, that sort of stuff, and really be engaged. And so that helped build, over time, a variety of different approaches and processes, I would say. We had to go through two more different site selection processes. I was working that time with Joe Connolly, who some of you may know, as a former interim superintendent in Gloucester. And, and that pulled in more and more people to be supporters and advocates, because they could see how the processes are playing out, they could see their, the need, and they could speak to the need to other people. In one example, it actually, the Driscoll School, it ultimately led to a successful debt exclusion override. In another school, in another part, a new school we tried to build in another part of Brookline, it actually also rallied, all that information rallied up opponents as well, and that wasn't successful. So I've been on both sides of those. But that really pulled in many more people into the process. At one point, people were saying, were pushing back and saying, we've had plenty of process, we've had plenty of open communication. We've been down this road. And so that was really music to my ears, because people at that point could see how much of a process, how transparent, how open we'd been in some very difficult decisions and processes, and that helped quite a bit. I had one more example, just quickly. Town, in Brookline, town meeting a couple of years ago, through the leadership of a few town meeting members, decided to change the name of one of our beloved schools, because we determined that it was named after a person who had held other humans in slavery. That was a powerful decision by the town. And we had, and the supporters of that were wary of the school department and wary of the process that we were then going to lead to change the name. And they didn't have a lot of faith in that we would lead an open and inclusive and collaborative process. And they really came at me specifically hard, because they didn't appreciate the process they thought I was trying to build. And so that was a low point in that, in that relationship with some very important community members. But what they found and what I found was, as we continued to work together, and they saw that our values matched, and my values specifically matched their values, and they saw the process proceed. And we, most importantly, followed through on our commitments, followed through on our promises, followed through on what we planned to do. And that, that follow-through, that following through on our word and our commitment and having integrity helped build back that relationship with a diverse group in town that was very wary of the school department. And ultimately, in fact, I spoke to one of the leaders today, because we are, ultimately, we have renamed the school, and it'll be renamed officially in the fall. And so to this day, they're now big supporters of us, the school department, of the principal of that school, and of where we're headed with the new name. So that's an example of where something can go wrong, but then you can build it back up again.
Thank you.
Sure.
Melissa, you have the, any follow-ups, Laura? Okay, Melissa, you have the next question?
Thank you. So my question is about relationships with school committee members. The roles and responsibilities of school committees and superintendents are sometimes clear and sometimes contiguous. For example, budgetary role versus budget implementation, or personal policy and finance versus personal administration, or even dealing with the parents and teachers with concerns or complaints. Can you describe some situations where these responsibilities have challenged you and how you would work to address them if you were to be our superintendent?
The way they've challenged me of late is, there's been a little shift in the school committee membership. There's been a change over the membership of the school committee in Brookline over the past, really, four years. At this point, of the nine members, I believe it's four or, I think, five at least, who have fewer than three years on the committee. And so there's always, I find, a real sort of, there's a big learning curve. I was on the school committee in Cambridge, you know, and, and remember just trying to decipher all that and figure that out and understand my role. So that's been hard, because there has been a real push to, to be much more involved in the management and the, and the administration of the schools from a couple of members. And I think, I find that's where, when the lines get blurred like that, it can, it can become more and more difficult. The other piece is, there's been a history of school members, like, you know, really trying to solve folks' problems, which I totally respect as a former school member, but that's another area where things get blurred. I think it works best, I know it works best, and we've had this, we had this in Brookline a few years ago, but need to sort of rebuild it. And that is when the school committee and the administration really start on the same page about what you want to accomplish. And you have, and you talk and you learn about people's values and shared values. You understand you're coming from a place of caring and concern for the school, for the school community. But you have a few things you really agree on, in terms of the focus, the purpose, and the goals of the schools. And then you can build from there. It does require really getting to know each other on, you know, to some degree, in terms of what, shared, what values you have and, and working on that. It does really help when you have defined practices in terms of how you're running meetings, how you're making decisions, that sort of thing, to really make sure that it's clear how the chair and the vice chair and the superintendent are working together and how, as necessarily, as necessary, what is expected of the superintendent in terms of pulling in other folks. Do you have a culture of having individual conversations to get people up to speed on things? Or are you doing it just through committee work? So what I have found and what I need to do more and more of is make phone calls to folks when they have questions, you know, and concerns, and not simply just wait for the, you know, the next meeting. And I don't mean that in terms of making, you know, deals, but just to answer questions, to keep people informed, to make sure they know that I'm listening and aware of their concerns. I think another piece I've seen work well, and we don't have this in Brookline, but I wish we did, I've seen it in Melrose, is they have a, in Melrose, they have a very clear, sort of, it's very actually well-defined, I think a two-pager, of who do you call when you have a question about something? So if you're a teacher and you have a question about your job or your position, who do you call first? You know, and then who do you call second and third? So you talk to your principal, and then you might talk to your, you might talk to your guidance, I'm sorry, principal, and then maybe HR, and then perhaps director, director of teaching and learning, and then perhaps superintendent. So there's a real order to that, but also for parents as well. You know, talk to your child's teacher first, and then perhaps the guidance counselor, and then the principal. And then, and then, you know, on and on until ultimately maybe the superintendent. But when people know where to turn for answers, they turn, they can turn less to school community members. And because often, the public can put you folks in difficult positions, expecting you to solve, solve problems and get answers that maybe you're not supposed to, or maybe it's not your role. And so then, in that case, you know, also, what does a school community ever do in terms of that situation? And that's, that's something that the school committee's got to work together on and decide how we're going to approach those sort of situations. And when do we raise the superintendent? When do we solve it ourselves? And what's our protocol and process for solving problems? So that clarity around what's important in your values, that clarity around processes, and that clarity about how we work together in decision-making, those really need to be worked out over time amongst all, amongst the superintendent and the school committee. And when that's clear, then I find that you can work well, much better together.
Thank you very much for that well thought, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, Kathy?
Okay, my question has to do with budget development. What is your view of the role of the superintendent vis-à-vis the district's chief financial officer? In other words, how do you build a budget, monitor the district's finances, and develop a good reporting system? And if there are particular things you've, you know, learned about Gloucester, how would that impact your, you know, how you would work with the budget?
Sure. I think one of the most important pieces is to really develop a practice of zero-based budgeting. Maybe not every single year, but certainly as we start, that's where I'd like to begin. I think it's important, especially in these times, as things get more and more difficult financially, to really know, for a superintendent to know, you know, as he or she begins, what is, what are we spending money on? And I mean very specifically, you know, it's easy, even if you, in a budget of any size, to just assume that money's been, being spent well, because it was spent that way, that way last year. So I think you really have to develop a process that the superintendent is very involved in in the beginning stages, certainly, about knowing what is being spent, by whom, and where, and for what purpose. If you can't justify and explain pretty simply why something's in the budget and what's, and what impact it's having, then you've got to look closely at that, and you've got to really question whether it should be in the budget or not. So I would also really believe in, in our schools, having some ownership in that process, quite a bit of ownership. I believe in school-based budgeting to understand, so you have principals, should be able to have some flexibility in terms of, are they, their school improvement plan aligned with district goals and district purpose? And if it is, they may have some variance between, based on their students, their families, their, their goals for some leeway within that spending. But I do believe in developing the ability of principals to make good choices around how they're spending money, that they have to, again, justify, to me, the decision superintendent, the business manager, in terms of how they're spending their money and why they're spending that money. And then the last piece, I would say, I do believe in, in a collaborative process where we are looking at budget together, my staff, the superintendent staff, sorry, and if you have curriculum coordinator, your curriculum coordinators, and your teaching and learning staff, special education, we have to make sure that the best ideas are coming to the forefront. So for example, a school may be supporting kids' social, their emotional and their behavior in a certain way, that's really making a difference, okay? If they're making a difference in a, in a real important area like that, other schools need to know about it, and they need to know what it costs, how to fund it, how to support it, and whether or not they're able to do the same sort of thing. So that only happens in that joint work and that collaborative work together. And then the last piece, and I think I really have a good example from Brookline on this, and I explained it already, was being very open publicly about how we're spending money, what we're spending it on, what the impact that money is, is having. And then also, you know, just making sure people know sort of bit by bit, special education, or English language learners, or paraprofessionals, or professional development, those different areas that we're spending, how much we're spending, and what we're spending it on. So you really have to, I think, for us, we did well this past year, in, or this year in Brookline, was making sure folks were very well aware of all that work that was happening and what it cost us. Oh, I'm sorry, I had one thing that, sorry. Because what I forgot to mention, it's very important, is the schools don't operate by themselves in any city or town, you know? I mean, you have, I have to work, and we've done a nice job in Brookline on this, is you have to work with the rest of the town. You have to work with the city manager, you have to work with the mayor, you have to work with the other departments, because you have to build a budget that's for the whole city, not just for the, not just for the school department. It's got to work for the whole city. And that means that, you know, if you have department meetings, the school department is at those department meetings. The superintendent is at those town-wide department meetings, because they have to know, I have to know, if I'm the superintendent, rather, you know, what the other challenges or priorities or important pieces for other departments are. Because can we support those? Can we play a role in those? Can they help us out? But certainly, it can't be a, you know, it's got to be working together to build that whole city budget, and that includes the, the schools being a real part of that.
I apologize. Melissa wanted to make a follow-up question on, on her last question, so we're going to go back and listen.
Sure.
No, no, the follow-up is for this question.
Oh, to this one, okay.
Yes. Just wanted to give you a heads up. So Ben, in developing a budget, we often find competing priorities. Gloucester High, like Brookline, Brookline High has CTE vocational programs. In your experience with budget development, how do you balance the expenses of the traditional education and all that comes with that versus the more expensive vocational expenses? We know it costs more to educate a child in a CTE program, sometimes with the necessities that they need. So if you, I just want to dig a little bit deeper into how you do budget development, knowing you have competing priorities with a vocational program in the school.
Sure. So I think one of the challenges in Brookline we've had is decision-making through anecdote, you know, and through advocacy. And that, that includes the budget. And I think that's, and what I mean by that is, we haven't had a strategic plan for a ride of years. One, and what I mean, and I mean like a real one that has very clear priorities, I've talked about, has a little clear focus, and then has identified efforts, initiatives you're going to take, you know, year by year, and over many years, to pursue that. And the reason I bring that up in this case is, you have to have that, otherwise, I think, a well-functioning school district has to have those priorities, because that's how you build your budget, and that's how you do your staffing, that's how you make your choices. So in this case, I think you really have to look at, you know, what other priorities in terms of supporting our kids in high school. And as it is, you know, with Gloucester, you have a, you know, a healthy, you know, pretty strong Voc Tech program in a few different areas, you know, a limited number of areas, I think they're really interesting and appropriate areas. But you have to decide, are, one, are those the areas that are right for our students, okay? And right for our community, that help our students get to wherever we want them to go? If those are the right ones, then you have to identify whether or not you are having the success with those students in terms of their placement and their training, so then they are hired to go on other programs. If, if you don't have that, then you're doing something wrong with either not funding them well enough, or not having the right instruction or leadership in that program. And at that point, you've got to decide, well, do we, do we choose to fund those ones more, and so we get better at them? Do we choose to do fewer, so we can afford to fund them better and do a better job on them? Or is it a point where we're sort of starving them, because there isn't a wide enough range? And then, and so that, that's how you have to make your choices, I believe, based on what is the, what's your values for your students? Where you want it, how you want it, what you see is that their preparation needed to go on to the next stages? The effectiveness of the programs currently? And then you're then weighing that against your other priorities around academics or instruction or professional development. But you have to make some tough choices there, based on looking closely at your values, your priorities, your plan, and then the impact, I mean, I'm sorry, then how that's being carried out. And until you do that, it's harder to make those choices. You're then just making them because of advocacy, or making them because someone makes a convincing argument at a school committee meeting, or you're making them, you know, or you're changing them year to year, rather than having a real path forward. So that's how I would do it, be based on a plan, based on analysis of the impact, based on what we want for our students. And then, you know, as you always have to do, you've got to make some choices between a few things. And it's best to do that when you're trying to focus on doing a few things well.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next question's mine. And Gloucester's about to submit a schematic design to the Massachusetts School Building Authority for a new elementary school, which will house a consolidation of two smaller elementary schools. Just to put it in perspective, they're both about 210, 220. The, the new school will be for 440 and a K5.
Great.
If approved by the MSBA, Gloucester will have to secure part of the funding with a debt exclusion override in November. So the question is, are you in favor of consolidation? And if so, how would you make that case to the public?
So I'm in favor of really good facilities for schools in any, in any community. I'm also in favor of, you know, schools that are of a decent size and not too big, you know? 440 is a larger school for Gloucester, I understand that, but it's not a very, very big school. It's a manageable size, and it's, I think, a size that, that can create a really strong community. I do understand there are challenges around, you know, walking to school versus riding versus buses, you know, that sort of thing, and neighborhood schools. That's always a challenge in any district that's, you know, shifting or consolidating. So I do want to say that it's a very, very difficult process, what you guys are going under, and you know that better than I do. So I think it makes sense to have really high-quality facilities. If that means it's better to do it long-term with fewer schools, and it sounds like you're on that path, that makes sense to me. I think in terms of moving towards a debt exclusion vote, what's really important is to know some roles here. And a superintendent and his or her staff, you know, have a, have a defined role. I think it's our responsibility to lead a process that helps the community be very well-informed about why you're on this path, about the way and the criteria and the process for making a decision, for all the information that we're providing to the community and to school community members about how to make that decision and what goes into that decision, what it costs, why we're here, all the work that's been done to get to this point, okay? Having all that information readily available, available on your website, available through emails, available. Having all that information readily available, available on your website, available through emails, available, you know, for folks to take and use is really important, because this, this, these, this superintendent and this unit of staff can't get involved in what becomes a real political campaign for the debt exclusion override. But what we should be able to do is provide the folks who are in the community, all the information they need around that, around that process. And so then folks who are for and also against can have full information, good information, to make their case to the public. But without that information and without a good process, without an open process, and without a timeframe that makes sure people understand, I mean, sorry, you know, why you're doing it, what it's going to cost, what the top process is, what has happened so far to date, all the work that's gone into it, what the choices are in terms of around dollars and impact on the tax levy, then then a school district and school department isn't doing its job to help the rest of the folks in the community make informed decisions. So I think that's, I do have to be obviously conscious as superintendent not to get involved in those political, in the political campaigns. But I certainly, it is certainly a student's responsibility to prepare people with the information to make good decisions and to go with that process publicly.
Okay, thank you. Safa, did you have a follow-up question?
No, I'm all set.
Okay, thank you. All right, the next question is from Laura.
No, no, Joel has the follow-up, I think.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Oh, Joel, Joel, go ahead.
So do you foresee any trouble coming in midway through the process? And, you know, if you were to help the district and the committee with making sure that the right information gets out and that the citizenry has the information they need to make an informed decision and hopefully, you know, support the school committee's trying to achieve here, you know, do you have concerns about coming in after this process as a new guy and being able to, you know, effectively gain trust and trustworthiness in time? But you'll be a reliable, seen as reliable source of this information, how would you address that, I guess?
No, it's a, it's a real challenge for someone who's coming, whoever, you know, whoever comes in as superintendent, because we won't know all that, we won't have lived all that you folks have lived and know it quite as well as you. So obviously, it's got to be, is it going to be a steep learning curve on many things, this being one of the most important immediate ones. You know, I do think that I will be asking for a lot of information about this and for to understand, you know, why we're doing it, what the purpose is, what the goals are, and I don't mean just what I can read in the paper, but really from from all of you and from, you know, looking, looking at the details. From that, you know, it's important that we make, we state the very clear needs of the school district, the very clear opportunity of working with MSBA. There's a real, real risk of not going with them in terms of tens of millions of dollars to the community. And so, yes, absolutely, a big challenge for someone new coming in, like I would be. It would really require quick learning, quick information, gathering information, packaging it in a way, communicating in a way that makes sense to people. That takes quite a bit of work to just make sure it makes sense and is digestible. I think the other piece, you know, one thing I'm thinking of is, you know, and I had the advantage of working for many years on a variety of building projects in Brookline, so this past fall, after failed that exclusion the prior spring, I really was the one making the final case to the community about why it was important, not only to go forward with the district school building project, but why it was important to go forward with that. It had, the cost of it had increased from, I think it was April to November, in by about $10 million. So two things, I had to make the case at that point why we should go for the higher, higher cost, okay? Why the time was now to do it, and what the risks were of not going forward. And I think in some ways, and it was, and I was able to say that in a coherent way, in a, in an informed way, in a way that I think people trusted. And because of that, a number of things happened. The select board approved the higher, an ultimately town meeting, approved the higher debt exclusion. And then people had the information and felt that I helped, you know, get it to that point, and they had the information to go forward to a successful debt override. So debt exclusion override, so I feel like I can make that case, would have to make that case, would have to learn a lot, a lot about it very quickly. But part of that is there is a risk of not going forward, and you've got to make sure people understand that as well.
Thank you. Laura?
We know that all kids can learn, but not all do learn. To what extent is their ability to learn and our ability to serve them a function of curriculum and good classroom instruction and/or a function of good finances and emotional support? And what can you, as superintendent, do to improve the outcome student have, and how have you done this elsewhere?
Sure. It is the, that is the question, right? As we can talk about a lot of other things right now, but this is the question. Your core instruction, the instruction that every child gets every day is the most important piece in any, in any school. And one of the things that allows that to happen well, because you can have a fantastic teacher who, if he or she doesn't connect with the students and doesn't know who they are, and I don't care what age, I was a middle school teacher, okay? Those kids want you despite what they may, how they may act and how they may come across. They want you to know who they are. And so you have to first learn about your students, no matter what age they are. You have to get to know who they are and know, and they have to know that you care about them, no matter what they're putting forth. And once you have that relationship, once they, they know you believe in them, then instruction can happen. And the quality of instruction matters a ton. Is it engaging? Is it of interest to the students, especially as they get older? Do they have ownership in it? Can they see themselves in the work they're doing? Do they see purpose in it? Are you asking them to do big things? Are you asking them to do projects? Are you asking them to take part in their community, or are you asking them to take part in the leadership of their school to solve big problems and work on challenging dilemmas? You know, are you asking them to be writers and actors, and are you asking them to be, you know, designers and makers? And so that's all part of instruction, you know, not only the relationship, how you structure it, how you engage students, what you're asking of them, how you know if they're making progress. And that's for, you know, if instruction is really, really hitting it, you're going to reach 60, 70, 80% of your kids, okay? The other challenge, though, is if you don't quite have that, then you can, you really, kids can start checking out. If they start checking out and aren't interested or don't believe that you care about them, that's when you get started getting more and more behavior problems. So then you need to have supports, and that's supports for English language learners. You have to have those programs, okay? You have to have supports, obviously, for special education and kids with 504, 504 plans, because you have to be able to provide more for kids who need additional services. And those are complicated decisions and complicated programs, and you need more training. But it also does go back to this thing I said before, which is we work together to get better. Because nothing's ever going to go perfectly in a school or in a classroom. And the question, what happens then? Do we throw up our hands and say it's the student's fault? Or do we throw up our hands and say it's the parent's fault, if we just had different parents? But, you know, we have the kids who come to us, and it's our responsibility legally and morally to serve them as best we can. So something isn't going well with a child or a grade or a teacher, then we have to look closely at that and learn together, what is it that 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 child needs, okay? And what can we try in terms of interventions? And I mean, like, you know, tier-one interventions. What is it, if that doesn't work, then we try, and how do we identify, is it literacy? If it's literacy, is it decoding, is it comprehension, is it word recognition? And you have to do that through assessing how they're learning and what they're learning, okay? And then you've got to provide supports with other teachers or with different approaches to the, for those children, and then you've got to see if they made progress, and if they didn't, you've got to try something new. But you can't just do that by yourself. You do need a team of teachers working together, that's on a grade level, or that's with special education teachers, that may be with, with your administration as well, that may be with English language teachers. And then you have to make sure that that's such a high priority that you keep on doing that step by step. One of the things I've seen that works very, very well, and I've been involved in working with teams of teachers, instructional teams in schools to identify what we call an instructional focus. So it could be on literacy or reading comprehension, or it can be on word problems, or it could be on, I've even seen instructional school-wide focus on vocabulary. But the reason that becomes very powerful and is very, very effective is that everyone, every teacher in that school is working on the same area. So let's say it's reading comprehension, okay? And they're identifying a one or two ways they're all going to teach reading comprehension. Now, that sounds kind of crazy, because people don't want to do it all the same way. But within that, what you do is you start sharing practices about higher teaching reading comprehension, and you start sharing assessments on how you're gauging improvement in reading comprehension. And teachers all have common language and common work, and that's how they work together to get better. And unless you are having that sort of focus and that sort of joint work, you're, you're just trying to do too many different things that ultimately you don't know what works and what doesn't work. You have to have identification, identify what works for each student, and so then you can do more of that, it can help the next teacher do more of that as well, so. Sorry, I thought I was a little all over the place on that, on that answer, but it really does come down to how you're training, how you're, who you're hiring with your instruct, for your teachers, how you're supporting them, how they're developing their relationship with the kids, and then how you bit by bit focus on improving instruction and strengthen the instruction you're providing to students every day. I think Melissa has a follow-up.
Melissa?
Just a quick follow-up question. You talked about getting, learning to get to know the kids. Do you see yourself as being in classrooms, or are you more of a delegator to get reported back to what's going on in classrooms?
No, I think, I mean, that's something that's been very hard this year with all that's been going on in Brookline and the size of it. But I really have to be in places and see people, and that's really in two ways. One, being in classrooms, you know, and seeing the students and seeing the teachers, and really, the way I do that is, is I'm walking around with the principal, you know, and I'm, and I'm doing a lot of things on that walk-around. I'm seeing how the principal interacts with students and teachers. I know I'm aware of, because like, for example, this year with principals, you know, I've, we've identified two strengths with the principals I'm working directly with, two strengths and two challenges. I'm seeing how they're working on their strengths, I'm seeing how they're working on their challenges in those walkarounds, I'm seeing the quality of instruction. We may be working on, say, you know, our sort of behavior management with paraprofessionals. We can talk about that and look at that at that point, so very much in the classrooms, because that helps on so many different levels. Maybe if you can get a specific program, you know, with English language learners. And when budget time comes, we can identify, I can, I will have seen that in this school, you know, say, in Plum Cove, it's working quite well, but in another school, you know, that it isn't. And so that helps you with the budgeting process, so it has to be in that. But another way that's really important, and I would really stress and like to, like to really do and be a part of, is being in the community as a superintendent, you know? So work with community partners, being at athletic events, being at, you know, the, at the performing arts events, being at Gloucester Education Foundation meetings, but really connecting with folks, being at, at, you know, healthcare centers or senior centers, because it's important for, for people to know about the schools and know about the progress of the schools, to know about the goals of the schools and how their tax, tax dollars are really making impact. You know, I know one of the real challenges you have is on, on school choice, and I think that's a way that a superintendent really being out in the public can help quite a bit. And there's more to talk about that at some, at some other point, but so definitely being someone who is, who's knowledgeable. I like to see things, I like to talk to people, I can build relationships. That's how you get the work done, and you can't do that from your office.
All right, Samantha, no, Samantha, yes.
Ben, can you please tell us about an instance where you have demonstrated leadership or commitment to equity in your work?
Sure. I'll give you two examples. One is a data-based one. When I first started in Brookline, and the role I had in Brookline was an assistant superintendent-level job. It was called special assistant to the superintendent, but it was part of our management team. It just that it had a funny title, really. But a part of that job, I mentioned community engagement communications, was also our data. And so how are we looking at our data and what, and what's it telling us? And for many reasons, Brookline is sort of a data, I don't know, phobic, or they don't embrace the use of data in a lot of ways, trying to say that in an appropriate way. But what we, what I did with my, you know, with, with one other person on my team was we started to look at a variety of data. First, of course, MCAS, and we showed folks that there actually have been about 10 years of a very persistent achievement gap on MCAS at all grade levels, in all separate areas, based on race and also class. So much so that higher-income African-American students were doing worse than low-income white students. So that was one area we looked at, but then we wanted to go deeper. And so we started looking at, and this was a support of the superintendent, we started to look at course enrollment at the high school and what students were in what tracks in the high school, you know, honors, advanced, that sort of thing, standard. And we looked at course recommendations from eighth grade into ninth grade. And we found out that, that the, the 70% of African-American Latino students were being recommended for standard classes, and 30% of white and Asian students were being recommended for standard classes, and then the reverse for, for honors classes, honors and advanced. And we just sort of showed that to folks, okay? But that, what that spurred was then the, I think, the history department or high school teachers wanted to see persistence, because there was a thought that if a child got into a standard track at the high school, that he or she could actually move to honors or advanced. So they, that spurred their curiosity, and then we showed them and put together the data that showed that, no, those tracks were quite persistent. Well, what that led to then was the history department, not work of mine, but, but it spurred them to redo their entire ninth-grade history class, to make it de-leveled, to make one class that was for all students. But the most important change was it became a much more rigorous class that focused on themes, big question, overarching investigations across time periods and eras and cultures. And they rolled that out, I think, last year. And that came from the desire to make sure that more kids had access to higher-level, engaging, rigorous courses, no matter what race or class that they, that they, that they hailed from. One more piece on that is a little bit different version, is we've been doing sort of these one-day professional development events on equity in Brookline for a couple of years, for a few years. And teachers always said, great, but how does this make an impact on my classroom? They wanted to, the action steps, you know, which is the right question. A year ago, the principals and I were doing some work with a new staff member of ours on anti-bias, unconscious bias. And we were all to that point thinking of, what do we do for professional development for the upcoming year? And I was the one who said first and then pushed hard and helped us make a plan. So we'd have 200, 200 teachers this year going through that training of four days internally, done internally, on unconscious bias and its impact in the classroom, and understanding equity and diversity, belonging and inclusion. And that's really part of the work where, when I talk about the importance of relationships and knowing students, that's the piece of coming, coming out of that work. So, and that was work focused on microaggressions and understanding our own bias and how it plays out in the classroom. But then, most importantly, we did a lot of work, we're doing a lot of work on role-playing. So when you have an incident in classroom about, that is about inequity or inequitable or concerning about race or bias, what does a teacher do, and what does an administrator do, and how do we act? So those are two areas where I set the tables by looking at data to address equity, and then was a leader in terms of pushing us, the whole district forward, to make sure many, many more teachers could have access to some really powerful professional development.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Joel, you have the next question.
Thank you. So what are your thoughts on the MCAS as an evaluation tool for students, an evaluation tool for teachers, and an evaluation tool for districts?
Sure, I think it's, it's a blunt instrument. It is helpful in terms of pointing in directions and helping us ask further questions. You know, I think a lot of, like, a lot of data, you have to look at, look at it and then say, why? What's going on here, you know? I do think it's helpful to disaggregate the data by school. You can even do it by grade level in school. I think it's a poor mechanism for evaluating teachers and shouldn't be used in that way. But I do think it's, it's one measure that should be used for assessing progress that a school's making, you know, over time, across subgroups, between subgroups. But again, it's, it can only, it's only one instrument, and it's not, it's not, you know, it's, it's, some folks are live and die by it. It's the sort of the Bible, the end-all, be-all, and it just, no stream of data, whether it's that or AP exams or AP enrollment, you know, or grades, can be, you know, you can, can't just look at one of those things. You, you can look at those to see if they tell You you can look at those to see if they tell a common story. And if they do, then you really have to address that story. What I really favor quite a bit more is data that teachers can use in real time. So that's, you know, benchmark assessments that are either a part of a curriculum that you're using or a part or some are developed by, it can be either teachers within a grade or across grades that they're using end of the end of unit assessments, could be even, you know, monthly assessments that are tied to the standards that you either have locally and and also statewide. And what's nice about those is you can, you know, you're sort of, you can assess based on what you expected them to learn and whether they learned it or not, because they've been can be quite granular, whether that's on literacy skills or reading comprehension or decoding, or whether that's on a unit, you know, in math later on in middle school. And then you can reteach or regroup based on that. And then if you have something you're using year to year, you can always compare it to prior years and see what the trajectory of the students you have now is compared to prior trajectories. So I think a culture, you know, part of working together to get better, isn't just going on our sort of human intuition, but helping you, you know, using data from a variety of angles to tell the full story. You know, I I always related to the idea of you going to a doctor. A doctor doesn't simply, you know, treat you based on what you tell them. They also have to take some tests to to verify or confirm or fill up to fill up the picture. And I think the same thing is with data and assessments in schools. If you simply acted on MCAS, you wouldn't be getting the full picture. Just like if you simply acted on a teacher's impression of of a child, you wouldn't be getting the full picture. You need to fill it out from a variety of sources. Did that answer your question, Joel?
Yeah, that was that was great. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. We got about ten more minutes and we got two more questions.
Okay, that's pretty good.
So the next one from Melissa.
Thank you. So mine is a, my question is about collective bargaining, and it's a three part question. What is the best role of a superintendent in collective bargaining, in your opinion? What are your experiences at the bargaining table? And how would you propose that we use the bargaining process to promote student achievement as well as control our expenses? And if you need me to repeat those, I can.
Okay. So best role of a superintendent, um, you know, partly on this, it really depends on what the history has has been in a place. You know, some places, it's just the lawyers negotiating it, you know? And I've seen that. Some places, the superintendent is in there, you know, every bit of the way. Another place is that superintendent comes in as a closer, you know? I think, so so let me talk about my involvement. I've been involved in a variety of ways. First of all, when when I was working in across Massachusetts and a number of states on extending the school day. So this is about the idea that a school day, especially for kids in poverty, could be longer, like an hour and a half longer per day. And that allowed you to do, make sure you did, you know, math and reading and writing very well. But also those students also had a chance for for enrichment, athletics, arts, music. We had to negotiate district by district with our with union partners to to get that supported and passed and paid for. And so that was large and small places, you know, in Boston, in Cambridge, in in Worcester, in Fall River, but also places like, I mean, also Framingham is another city. And then also, you know, places around, you know, working in turnaround work, like Denver and some some places in Colorado. And so so that was that sort of very focused on getting specific agreements to doing something really big and difficult, like extending the school day and making the school day longer for teachers. And then in Brookline, I was part of the for the last, our last contract, which was about four years ago, three years ago now, part of the team developing strategy and communications and and foreign negotiations, but not part of the team. And then this year, part of the team, as we tried to negotiate a one year successor, wage only successor. And then now, up until the pandemic hit, we're involved in negotiations for a successor agreement. And in those, as a superintendent, I was involved in almost all the meetings, not every single one of them. But very involved in actually being there, hearing proposals, talking them through, sharing them, countering them, that sort of stuff. I think it really depends on the relationship between the 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 union leadership and the district. I really like an approach that's problem that where you're problem solving together, where you laid out some defined goals around around students and supporting students and goals for the for the for the, you know, for teaching and learning. And then you're trying to craft a an agreement that supports those. So let me give an example. I'm not sure if we're if we're going to come to agreement on this, but certainly we had shared with the Brooklyn Educators Union and my team had a shared desire for more collaborative learning time. So that especially for K to five, you know, K to five teachers, they hardly have, they hardly have any common planning time or time to work together, unlike their middle school or high school counterparts. And they often, they're teaching all the subjects, obviously. And so it always has made sense to me that they have, they need more time to consult with special educators, consult with each other about students, as I was talking about before. And and so how do you how do you arrange that? So are there things you can agree to or come to agreement to prior to that are priorities that you want to see carried out in the contract? Okay, common plan can be another one of that could be one of them. It could be timing of different processes around notification. And if you can can come to an agreement, you want those things changed, then you have groundwork for seeking solutions together. And then that depends largely on how you can work together. And I've worked with a variety of leaders and been fortunate to work with folks who really want to solve problems and work together and really wanted to create a good agreement in a timely fashion, and others who've been not as interested in that. And I'll always prefer the former, but have experience working with the latter.
Thank you.
And Kathy has the final question.
Okay, you don't need to give a different example. This is about professional development. I know you talked about it. The question is, across different levels of the district, describe how you would know whether professional development programs and initiatives have affected the knowledge, skills, and practices of educators in the district.
Great. Um, I think professional development is is works best when a school is doing something together. Not everything together, but for example, one of our schools in Brookline this year, and this was a school based initiative, it wasn't a district based initiative, started doing some work on trauma sensitive schooling, really, really powerful. Anytime I work with schools who who investigate and learn more about trauma sensitive schooling instruction, and it's been very, very powerful in terms of that those teachers understanding their students better, understanding what their students face on a day to day basis, and then really working with students to make sure that the classroom and the instruction is more successful for them. So but it wasn't just a teacher or two doing that on their own, going off to a conference. It was the whole, all the fact of doing it together. And when I mentioned before about the school wide instructional focus, it allows teachers to have common language and common experience where they think they can talk about in the hallways, in the in the staff lounge, you know, in their team meetings. So that's, I think, a very powerful piece. That is then also, on a school level, it supports a district wide goals. Sometimes, like in our our work on restorative practices and, no, I'll give another example on on math, you have to really do something more district wide. And I think the way we've done math development or taken on a new math program in Brookline has been a real great example of professional development and support of teachers improving practice. And that is, teachers were involved in in identifying which curriculum to pilot in math. This is K to five and six to eight. Then then folks were invited to pilot that, two of them. And then we got a lot of input on from what they were learning. And that was after school during faculty meetings, additional times after school. That was with some coaches. They then decided on what which one to pursue. And then that then we train, we helped develop and train them over the course of a summer, sorry, spring and summer to learn that. We, in the summertime, we also brought special educators on that. And then and then they started rolling out six to eight this year. K to five is doing, developing mathematic, developing DMI, developing mathematic concepts, DMC. And then they're they're doing that as a basis of understanding mathematical concepts, training for a year. Then they're also piloting, then they select the 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 new curriculum. And then they'll have a year where they're being supported on that curriculum as well as a summer. The point I'm making is that it has to happen over time in a focused way, in a pretty intense way to do it quickly but thoroughly. We did literally work for about ten years that wasn't focused, wasn't organized, wasn't consistent, was rolled out, you know, sort of in spots here and there, and we're still trying to roll out effectively. So you can gauge its success about whether, when you go in a classroom, first first about how it's done. Are people well supported, well trained, and they had the time to learn together? Okay, that's an important piece. And then in terms of whether it's successful, you have to set out benchmarks. In this case, are they doing it? Okay, are they being held accountable to doing it? In this case, the math curriculum. And then you have to have times where they're meeting and talking about how it's going, what they can improve, what support they need, provide that support, and through that work, you're seeing if it's actually being done. And then, of course, you've got to look at the different assessments you're using. If you have local assessments or MCAS, to see if that math curriculum is actually making a difference in the areas you want to make a difference in. And that sort of requires knowing ahead of time what you're the problem you're trying to solve. So you know what what problem you're trying to solve. You need to be inclusive in terms of having people involved in in developing it and doing it. You've got to support them over time. You've got to monitor progress against your goals using assessments. And then you've got to be honest about what what impact it's having and what you have to do to make sure it has an impact.
Thank you.
Sure.
Well, thank you very much. And if you'd like to spend a few minutes wrapping up and telling us anything more about yourself, we'd be happy to hear. And
I think I've covered a lot of things, but maybe I'll just do something quickly here. I think, I mean, gosh, especially this age, you know, no one asked about coronavirus and what's going to happen this fall. And and I hope Gloucester is complaining on that, because we all need to, right? So that's one one big piece. And so but I guess I would focus on a few things, just to reiterate a few things. I think I've tried to express how I know the work, you know, whether it's capital planning, whether it's instruction and and teaching, whether it's getting those students, working with principals, emergency preparation. There are so many pieces that I've been doing, both as, you know, the sort of the assistant superintendent level, but also recently as a superintendent. And so I know the sort of ebbs and flows of that position of all that comes at you, all the flexibility and focus you have. And I've been doing that for for a while now. I think you'll find me someone who works well with people and connects with people and really values inclusive, collaborative, and open leadership. I think you'll find that I'm a relationship builder, that I'm a communicator. There's never been a district or a school that's over communicated. If I come to Gloucester, I would, I would, I would try to be the first ever. Because you can't make big decisions without including people in them and making sure they know where you're headed, what you're trying to accomplish, and making sure they're they're well informed, they're included, and they're engaged. And I think you'd find me as someone, a leader who who helps people know, helps people decide and figure out together where we're going, is helps them see a better future ahead, whatever that future might be for the for the community and the in the schools. And I'm able to to develop a path towards that, work with other folks, a clear path and make a plan to make progress. You'll find me someone who who does what I say I'm going to do. And I think that's important for administrator. And I think you'll find that people really enjoy working with me, working for me, in that I'm someone who, you know, really believes in building up people so we can do the work together. It's too important to do it on our own. We, the the group of us on this call would have to work really well together. And and that's a challenge I think I've I've been successful in doing and and would hope to do in Gloucester.
Thank you very much. And we'll, as I said, we still have a few more interviews to do. And then we'll be in touch with you later in the week. Thank
Great. Good luck with everything, folks. It's been a pleasure.
Thank you, Ben. Thank you very much.
Good night. So as I said, we're probably not going to do follow ups. And we will reconvene on Thursday night. We have BNF tomorrow night. And then Friday, and then after the last, after the final interview, we should plan on spending some time trying to narrow the field down to two or possibly three candidates. Anybody want to say anything before we adjourn? Okay.
Motion to adjourn?
So both.
Okay, Maria, roll call vote.
Laura? Yes. Kathy?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yeah.
Sophia?
Yes.
Samantha?
Yes.
Okay, the meeting is adjourned and we'll see you all soon. Thank you very much.